Welcome everyone to the special Shelby Township Township Hall meeting here on December 11th, 2014. Thank you very much for coming here tonight. As you know, the township's role in this Detroit Water Sewerage Department project is to act as an advocate for our residents, taxpayers, and motorists. The Board of Trustees has worked with Rickman Construction and officials from DWSD to ensure that our taxpayers and residents get the most out of the project with a two-lane reconstruction project. But it is still a water main project, first and foremost, as being conducted by Rickman to the specifications of a contract with the Detroit Water Department. And knowing that there's very little that the township can do to regulate or influence a project, the Board of Trustees is extremely thankful for the cooperation and collaboration that we have had with Mr. Steve Mancini from Rickman and Ms. Sue McCormick from DWSD. Rather than push ahead with a project that meets the minimum needs of the water main, they have worked together with the Board on numerous fronts to ensure that it does so in the best possible way for our community. And I am confident that the relationship will remain this way throughout the project over the next two years. With that said, I will now turn it over to Mr. Steve Mancini for an update on the project, and then I'll do the introductions. Mr. Mancini?
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, everybody, and I just want to introduce myself, Steve Mancini, and Ryan Stalmack, he's our project manager on the 24 Mile Project. A quick update, just thought I'd bring everybody up to speed where we're at. We were able to work together with DWSD, Macomb County, and Shelby Township to allow for winter work, so kind of a brief update, we're going to work two crews, plus we're going to work a third crew doing some of the tunneling under different drains and different, we have to tunnel the M-53 overpass. So, that's one update, and the goal was to work through the winters and to bring the project in ahead of schedule. We're anticipating close to a year improvement on the schedule by being able to work with two crews working through the winter. Most of you probably noticed, we've started the first crew at Romeo Plank. We're moving westward on our way to eventually Crew One will get to Van Dyke. We anticipate that sometime midsummer, followed by the pavement restoration. Crew Two has just actually started this week. It's west of Van Dyke, and that crew will be working toward the Rochester Pump Station. So, the goal is to run two mainline sewer crews. It's a little bit different than the original proposal. It was supposed to be one crew with winter shutdown. We're now able to work two crews through the winter, which will be a big improvement on the schedule. And so, that's all moving forward right now. We're really kind of just getting into full swing. That being said, we wanted to be here tonight to talk to the residents, talk a little bit about the traffic, the fact that westbound lanes are closed in some instances, a complete closure for the tunnels. And Rick, you may want to say something.
Yeah, before we get started, I just want to do some quick introductions. We've got Mohammed Jabar. He is from the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department. Thank you, Mohammed, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Also, along with Mr. Steve Mancini, we've got Ryan Stalmack. He is from Rickman as well. And of course, Kay Schneider, she's from Owen Tree Service, is doing a great job for us, watching the trees and looking out for them, and she's got a lot to talk about tonight. And of course, all of you know Shannon Fileorecki from Fosil Con and Associates. So, the way we're going to do this tonight, folks, is if you have questions, come on up and ask them. Now would be the time, and if there are no questions, that will conclude the meeting. No, we do have one, I'm kidding. Yes in the back, come on up. And I'll tell you what, so I don't have to stand and point, why don't you just start lining up right here, and if you have a question, we'll start the line here. Thank you.
All right. My name's Tom Laberty. I've only been a resident here for seventeen years. I live, excuse me, on 24, 4968. And my question is in regards to the trees. I came here because of the trees, and I guess this question is to you, Kay. There's a lot of yellow ribbons around the trees. There's some with the whole trunk, some with the branches that are high. The second one is I notice a little red circle on a tree. And does that mean it's going to be cut down?
No, we haven't determined any trees would have to be cut down at this time, other than, with one exception, there is a Norway maple that when we were looking at and doing our review, noticed it's split.
Right.
It's actually splitting apart, and that's a hazard tree, so I just brought that to the attention of Shelby, and I think they probably talked to the Road Commission about that.
Okay, so the little red circle that they painted...
I did not put a red circle, I'm not...
The purpose of the ribbons were to identify trees that may need some limbs pruned. Right now, what we did was identify, Ryan went out and just put ribbons around trees and possible limbs that we were confident the limbs would have to be pruned. At this point, I'm not sure we've identified any trees that are to be removed.
Nope.
Is that correct?
We have not identified any trees that should be removed as of now.
Yeah, so right now, we're just, we do need about a thirty-foot canopy, and what I'm being told, and Kay, you might be able to explain more about this, is that, you know, that's really not going to damage the tree, and that canopy will come back, but we do need about a thirty-foot clearance to be able to safely pick up a piece of pipe and put it in a hole. What the last thing we want to do is hit the limb and break it off with the excavator. It's a safety issue, it's, you rip a limb off a tree, it's going to stress the tree. So, the goal is to, one, identify trees that need to be pruned, and then identify branches and tree limbs that need to be pruned, and have the residents look at that and raise their concerns. Right now, we do not intend on taking any trees down.
Are you going on both sides of the road?
Most of them are on the north side, but there may be an occasional tree on the south side that has low canopy. We're just really looking for that thirty-foot canopy.
Okay, I was just wondering, Kay, if you could just hold that thought for that red, that red circle that was painted on the tree that's right in front of my house. And it's a beautiful oak tree.
Nothing, we don't know.
No? No, this is brand new, yes.
We'll check into that, I'm not aware of it, but we'll definitely check in.
Nobody knows about the red circle?
Four nine six oh.
Four nine six oh, okay. And one other thing, oh, by the way, we do have a trustee here, Ms. Paula Feiler, she's in the back, and I don't see anybody else. Okay, Ms. Paula Feiler, welcome. I was wondering, Ms. Schneider from Owen Tree Service, could you please give your report? I know we hired you a couple of weeks ago, and why don't we just start with the full report that you gave to me, and I think the folks would kind of like to hear what's going on, and then I'll turn it back to the floor for questions.
To read the report.
If you want to, you can do that, too.
Okay, summarize, let me summarize the report, then.
Thank you.
Yes, I was called out because, as Rickman was going through and seeing that they needed some tree work done, they said, "Oh, boy, we need a tree person out here to make sure this is done properly," which I really appreciate. It's always nice to be called out before things happen than to try to fix things that have already happened. So, we all, we all went out and walked the entire area that, trees of concern, which are all the ones that are marked, and discussed what, how, what a good, proper cut would look like on the trimming, and maybe we can, you know, have bend the branch and not break it and whatnot, and a lot of that's going to be determined as we get our actual measuring stick out there and whatnot, and to do the pruning. So, those trees that are marked are going to be trimmed. Some of them are going to be trimmed so lightly you'll notice it, but not a big deal. Some of them you're going to notice. In that, my report, I indicated those trees that are going to be pruned a little heavier. None of them should be damaged by the pruning such that we're worried about the condition of the tree. But it will be a little, you know, some of those big lower limbs are going to have to come off. And as Mr. Rickman, yes, says, yeah, it's much better to trim it and trim it properly than have it rip, because oftentimes you damage the main trunk when they rip rather than just the limb itself. So, that's the first thing we identified. We also looked at excavation, because they obviously have to make a very wide hole to get the pipe laid. And some of those trees are pretty close to the edge of the road, which I'm sure you're all aware of. So, we're looking at that and what we might encounter, and at that point, we're going to do everything we can, we're going to go slow and see what we find, move around it if at all possible, cut the roots that I determine, or whoever is out there on site determines is, can be cut, and preserve the trees as best we can. So, there are just a few of those trees in that they were identified in the report.
Yeah, my name's Andy. I live on Briar between Shelby Road and Dequender. And my question isn't about trees, but I was concerned about them adding lanes. Is it going to remain two lanes?
Yes, it's going to be a new, full-width pavement, but to the, pretty much to match the existing. There won't be any added lanes that I'm aware of, not even at the intersections. This is not an improvement project. We are not adding turn lanes, acceleration, deceler, we're just literally putting it back the way it is, but to new, new full-width pavement section.
Yeah, because, you know, the noise right now, it's bad enough if you live near the road.
Yeah.
And adding more lanes would just make it a highway, and it's really all...
Won't happen under this contract.
And we're all residential, really, you know, on that street there. You know, because I noticed on 25, they seem to have added lanes at...
That was a road project under the Road Commission. This is a water main project under DWSD, so it's really a different project. But you're going to get a new full-width road, but with no real widenings or improvements.
Okay. And why not, if you do have to take a tree down, just put some ten-foot pines in there? They're spending thirty million dollars, according to the sign I see there.
If a tree has to come down, I'm sure it'll be replaced, but at this point, we're not intending on removing trees, except maybe the one that is critical, it's split, and that might come down.
Yeah, because we had heard a rumor they were going to put in an extra lane or two, and I thought, wow, you know.
Nope.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ron Churchill, 52811 Mound Road. Mr. Stufreiser, my question is, when they start each individual mile stretch, such as Van Dyke to Mound, Mound to Shelby, et cetera, is the traffic going to be shut down completely both ways, or are they going to intermittently let traffic through, depending on what they're doing, on what side of the road they're working on at that particular time? Because my thoughts on this is, I think it would make common sense to completely shut down the road on each mile stretch, so they can probably do a more faster, efficient job. And also, I think a safety issue would be involved here. If they completely shut it down, then they can do their thing and get out of there without having to worry about traffic. Thank you.
Did you want to answer that? It was just you, Rick, or would you like me to take that? Kind of figured that would be your answer. Really, the decision was, the Macomb County Road Commission asked that one lane of traffic be maintained, so eastbound traffic will be maintained. There will be occasions where major structures, vaults, tunnels, where there will be a complete shutdown, but that being set aside for the majority, for all of the open cut, we will maintain eastbound, we'll do it safely, in strict accordance with the county and state handbooks for traffic control, so, and we do need to maintain access to residents, to businesses, to churches and schools. So, there will be eastbound traffic as we progress between the different north-south major roads.
Good evening, my name is Michael Wood. I live on Sandy Creek Drive. My concern that brought me here today was, I heard, obviously, the rumors about this trench with the water main being down twenty feet was one of the figures that we heard, and then making the trench an excavation by pushing it back forty feet on each side of the road. And seeing all the ribbons on all the trees, seeing the ribbons up high, okay, that makes sense that those were going to be just trimmed up, but then seeing the ribbons around the trunks of the trees, that really raised my concern, as I'm sure it did with everybody here. Would have liked to hear a report before this question-and-answer session, so that we could, you know, not waste our time with the questions or your time. With the trench going down twenty feet and then having to excavate it back, what's the possibility of utilizing your trench boxes and kind of, once you're done stacking a bunch of trench boxes up, to be able to get down to the level you need to? I realize it's going to slow your work down, because you don't have the full freedom of movement, bringing those pipes in, swinging them left and right. But what's the possibility of having trench boxes stacked on top of each other to give that safe work area for your coworkers?
We won't be forty feet wide. The trench will get thirty feet, or twenty feet, sometimes even deeper than twenty feet, just in the crossings, but depending on the soil types, we'll either stack the trench boxes, or we'll use a combination of trench box and plates. In some of the wetter sandy soils, you simply can't stack trench boxes, it's not technically feasible. But in either event, you know, there's an incentive on our part to keep the trench narrow. It saves on our trucking, it saves on the sand we have to import, so, and sand's expensive, trust me. So, we are going to make every effort to keep that trench as narrow as we can safely and possibly keep it. It will be trench boxes, it will be, in some instances, stacked trench boxes, in some instances, box and plates, but it's definitely our goal. And again, you know, we're looking at each, all of these trees, and our goal is to not lose or to disturb the root systems to the point where the tree doesn't survive. That's our goal, and we're hopeful that we can make, be successful at that goal. But we are doing everything we can to keep that trench as narrow as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Sue Olcovic, 7410 Conys. My concern is Ruann. I live on the corner of Ruann and Conys, and we have what they call a culvert bridge. And we have all these people coming over this bridge, and we only have one way in and one way out, and it's this culvert bridge. We've had big semi trucks, seventy, as long as my house, come through there and back, back up. They don't realize there's no outlet. People use the iPhone, and they can see that Metz is still open. And we've actually pulled in ourselves, went down towards Metz, Metz, to watch people come in. And even though you have this big wood sign, it's not a sign that they can see at night. It's written in red during the day, but you can't see it at night, it doesn't glow or anything. So, I don't know what to do, because I'm afraid that bridge goes down, and we're in trouble. I did call the office.
So, we're looking into that, we're aware of that issue?
Well, I had called once on it, yeah.
I spoke to you, and that's when we put up that, that sign originally, that said, "No Outlet" and everything.
Yeah, but it doesn't seem to, I don't know, I mean, I know you're trying, but I don't know the answer. And if that culvert goes down, I don't have any way in and out.
Ryan's aware of it, and we'll talk about it, maybe I'll even meet you out there and take a look at it, but maybe we'll switch it to some type of message board.
It might be flashy or something, I don't know.
Something, get it lit up a little better.
But their kids are smart with these phones. I had my grandson look it up to make sure. It says Metz Drive goes through. They don't say it's closed because of the bridge, it just says exit.
We'll take a look at it, and please call us if you continue to see a problem, because I think Ryan's on it, and we'll hopefully get it solved here within the next several days.
You have my number, correct, ma'am?
I don't think so. No, I just got it out of the paper, the circular that we got in from the township.
All right, well, why don't we give you his business card, and please call us. Like I said, he's, he's working on it, he's familiar with it.
Thanks, can we go in?
Yep.
We'll get it, we'll get it taken care of.
You're welcome. We'll get it taken care of.
How you doing?
Good.
First, I want to really thank ladies and gentlemen for taking the time to come out to our township and have this open meeting. I want to thank Rick and everybody that's done it as well, because what it's going to do is going to take all the rumors and the falsehoods and the misconceptions and clear it up, what's going on. Most of my questions were already answered, so, really, what I, what I have is more comments, and they're going to be geared towards the preservation of the trees. And I think I speak for a lot of the neighbors. One of the reasons that I bought in Shelby Township back in 1985 was because it was a community of trees. And I first bought it 21 in Shaner, and I had a half a mile of woods. And then the city of Utica annexed it, and there went my woods. My for-sale sign went up in two minutes, and I was out of there. So, I chose, I looked at a lot of different locations, but every time I went down 24 Mile Road, I just fell in love with that area. It's just so peaceful, serenity and everything. So, having the trees is very important. I built in Seven Oaks up, it's named after trees. I saved all the trees I could. I saved trees within ten feet, which my excavator said would never live, all these other developers said would never live. So, I know trees are resilient, and I put special care to fertilize these trees every year, feed them, so I know that even though you're going through these constructions, there are ways of saving those trees. And I'm glad that we have Kay and Owen Tree Service that's going to hopefully help us even through the years to make sure that happens. So, personally, the trees are very important, that's why I bought there. On a business level, I'm also the Township DDA Chairperson. And that 24 Mile Road is a very important pathway into what we are developing as our downtown area of entertainment and services to the community. So, having people come down 24 Mile, both east and west, and seeing all the trees is going to be a wonderful thing. So, I just hope when it comes time for that consideration, do we really need to take that tree limb down? Do we really need to take that root away? Can we possibly sustain the tree with fertilizing afterwards? And I don't know if there's an ongoing program that's going to take care of trees that might need a little help, but I hope we take that into consideration. Other than that, I've heard nothing but great things about Mr. Mancini and everybody else, and I have a lot of confidence they're going to take care of this.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Scott Blanchard. I'm a pastor of a church that's on 24 Mile, and right across the street from Moni, we meet in Aludun High School North. And one of our concerns, and I've talked to several other business leaders, was a little confused, you know, because we, you know, we deal with customers, you know, people coming through, and people, a lot of people think that it's closed, that the road closed, because the sign says, you know, "Road closed to through traffic." And so, I was wondering if there was any consideration to tweak it? Maybe say road closed except for local businesses and residents only, or something to that effect? If that would be something that we could think about to help us, for example, Moni has lost seventy-five percent of their business, and I talked to him last week, and he's afraid that he's not going to make it. And he thought, man, you know, I can't do anything about the construction, but if we can just change the wording, maybe people can come through and think they can still come to my restaurant. And so, is that something we can consider, or is that something that's a possibility?
Certainly, if there's a confusion in the signage, we, do you know the specific businesses or the intersection he's talking about?
Yeah, Garfield, yeah. I know exactly where it is. I've spoken to Moni on multiple occasions, so...
Yeah, I mean, certainly, if there is a sign that we can add to help clear, make it very clear that that road is open to business, I think the real point we're trying to impress is it's only open to eastbound traffic.
I understand.
So, if there's a confusion when it says road closed, let's try to clarify that. I thought we had all of those issues resolved, but if there's an issue, we want to know about it.
Yeah, I think they currently, right now, it says, "Road closed, local traffic only."
But it says road closed to through traffic.
Yeah, sorry.
That's it. And so, it makes it sound like, and I got people that want to come check me out for first-time visitors, I'm in, "Closed."
The thing we really have to be careful of is, we have to follow the county and state guideline, and we need to make sure the county will approve...
I understand.
...a signage change, but we certainly will bring it to them. If it's unclear, we want to try to make it as crystal clear as the county will allow us to make it, so...
Yeah.
If we, you know, if we can get rid of road closed, or if we really have to do something to make it more clear, let's do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to our supplier tomorrow, and then talk with the Road Commission, and see what's available, and see what, you know, they're accepting of, and I don't, we don't have a problem making a change, so...
Thank you very much. You have a business code, I can...
Yep. And again, if it's not satisfied to your satisfaction, call me.
Good evening, Rob Kachor, Benedict Lane. I have four quick questions, some from my neighbors, one from myself. The temporary sign that's on, by the Water Works Building on 24 and Whitby Way, is that a temporary sign? It's where it says, "The Mayor's Water, Water and Sewerage."
Yeah, it's temporary, it'll only be up during the project.
Okay, I also understand now the eastbound lanes are going to be left open. During the wintertime, it's going to be concentrated traffic in there. There's probably going to be a lot of potholes and everything. Are these potholes going to be addressed, or is that eastside lane going to really turn poor and cause a lot of problems for vehicles?
The goal is to maintain the existing eastbound lane as it is in its existing paved condition, so we're not anticipating a lot of potholes, but if some do develop, they'll be maintained. If you see them, please call us, you know, don't be afraid to say, "Hey, there's a pothole, it hasn't been addressed." But, you know, our staff is, and our safety, traffic, safety officers, driving the project daily. I drive the project almost daily, and so, if we see something, we'll be on it. If you see something, please call us.
Real good. How about, once this work is done, how are we going to repave 24 Mile Road? What method? Are they going to use asphalt, or are they going to use a nice, good, deep cement base, something that's going to be permanent?
They're going to use permanent asphalt. It will be deep base, it'll be to the county standards, but that is the pavement that's specified. And that's, unfortunately, that's not my decision, that's the way it was designed by the county.
Going to be warranty on that type of work?
Yes, yes. It'll have all the traditional Macomb County Road Commission design warranty bonds, it's all pretty much...
It'd be, it'd be nice if someone could write an article and let the public know what these warranty, what it's about.
I don't write articles, but certainly, I'm sure maybe somebody Shelby Township...
If some journalist would be interested, would they be able to contact you, and you'd give them that information?
Certainly, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. One more thing. Maybe about ten years ago, I live on Huntington Lake, and the land developers there built a subdivision back of us, and Macomb County did not take into blocking the sewers or drains, and we got a lot of building sediment and silt that came into the lake, and you could just see bars, and it brought the lake level up higher, not lake level, but the base of the lake higher. So, we maybe lost two feet or so. During this construction phase, that's going to take about two years, is there any adverse effects that can be occurring as far as draining into the man-made lakes we have in this area?
No, I, we, you know, all of the erosion controls, silt, sediment controls, there should be no instances where you would experience silt building up in your lakes. If you were to see something, please let us know, but I...
What about the sewer grates on 24 Mile Road? Are those going to at least have a bale of hay or something on there to filter out all the sediment and silt that could be going into the lakes?
Well, they have the appropriate, I'm not sure they use bales...
No, because they did not initiate that, Macomb County did not initiate that. They did in Oakland County, but not in Macomb. This is, I'm talking ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah, right now, our, as of our last discussion, from when we get to those areas, it was rock bags for the inlets to stop silt and sediment and debris going in the inlets.
And we will see that early in a, in a project?
Well, when we get, where we have curb inlets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll be there early.
It's all part of the soil erosion permits, and there's inspectors out there watching it, and quite honestly, we're pretty up to speed on it. Times are different today than they were ten, twenty years ago. It's very, it's monitored very, very strictly.
Thank you. Back to you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I think we're a little short or I don't talk loud enough. I'm probably a little short. Okay, my name is Ruth Jackson, 5021 Eastbrook Court, Shelby Township. And I have lived in that house since, for, since 1955. So I have seen as the water tables change and everything and it goes down and all the pollutants and everything else. And yes, city water is very important, there's no doubt about that. And other than I am very aware that they put the tree on for, we become a tree community and whatnot. And yes, those trees, the arch over the road and everything else has been there practically my whole life. Those trees are old, I remember trees that were cut down that were huge as time went by. But when you drive around from Franklin to Birmingham to Bloomfield Hills, matter of fact, you're up in Attica, when you go to Metamore, this is where you know Leonard, Dryden, they, yes, I am aware they don't have city water and yes, I am also aware of when they put the city water lines down 24, they didn't need to start cutting the trees. And yes, granted, some of them are younger, some are old, but they're all very important. And as you're aware, I see you looking at me, I have been all, all around the areas and yes, you have the very large homes to the north of Rochester and that. And they don't seem to take things away that, and I do know, I rode down last night because I wanted to see before this meeting, down 24 Mile Road, to see exactly how big these booms were. Yes, they're about 25 foot, easy. And how come they did not need to take all these trees back 14, 15 years ago when they put the lines through? They didn't need to do what they've got marked on the agenda to do with these trees. And yes, I am aware that the city water is important and it would stop, you know, if there was shoddy work done in the past, why, and yes, we do need more water, why is this happening? Because there's sewer lines, water lines and everything in other areas that are still holding up and don't need to be replaced in this short a time.
Well, a couple of questions there. One, the, the, the water main you're referring to, the 36 is on the, it'd be on the westbound, I'm sorry, the eastbound, under the eastbound lane.
Mm-hmm.
That's an existing 36. I, my understanding is that was put in in the early 70s.
Right.
Yeah, so you're probably talking.
By making myself younger.
Yeah. So that main is, is almost getting to its end of its useful life.
End of its use, is that what it is? It's end of its useful life?
Coming, coming close to 50 years now, 45 years anyhow. So that main has to be replaced and it's too small.
But there's a lot of homes here now.
Yeah, so we, and we were the contractor that made that repair, oh, what, six, eight months ago over on 24, just.
Romeo Plank.
Well, it was west, it was between Van Dyke, I think, and Shaner, right in front of the nursery. So it, it's kind of clear that that main is, the, the wires in, that hold the, it's a high pressure water main, so the wires that are inside of that main are just, they're brittle, they're old, they're, they're, it's like your, a car that rusted out, it's.
And people.
Yeah, so to, to, to provide water service to Shelby Township for the next 40 to 50 years, that main has to be replaced.
Right.
So that's really the reason. I, I can't say how many trees were taken down back in the 70s, certainly any trees that would have been in the way on that southbound side, I'm sure were taken down or pruned. And we're, again, we're going to limit the amount of pruning really to what's.
A bare minimum?
Absolute necessary. Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't do us any good to prune trees. We, you know, these operators are highly skilled, the guys running on, running this equipment, I've worked with them for probably 20 years at least, myself personally, so I, I know these guys, they're, they're very good, good operators. So we're not going to take limbs down unless we absolutely have to.
Have to. All right, well, that's what I, because it, it's a shame, one other, you know, if you can take Franklin and everywhere else and they can save their things, their trees and whatnot.
We're hopeful that you, you'll notice it, but we're hopefully, long-term, it won't have a real effect on the, the beauty of the canopy. Because I, I live on a street that has that canopy and I love it, I, I agree.
Oh, yeah.
And that's our goal, that's why we brought it to the township's attention and, and the township engaged Owen. We, we, we saw the, the potential and we wanted to be proactive, so.
What, what, what our goal would be was the canopy, that nice arching tunnel that you have, it, it's going to be there, but it's going to be higher.
Higher up. How many years have?
And it might take a couple of years for it to fill in, but it's not going to be as low and actually you want at least 20 feet over your road just for emergency vehicles anyway, so.
How many years have you been in business?
20. Owen's been in business, I think about 30 years. I've been working for him for 15 and I've been, I've been in arborist for 28 years.
28, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Well, as with everyone else, that's our concern, or at least mine, I know that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name's David Carrier, I live off of 24 Mile Road in Mark. I have a ditch in front of my house on 24 Mile Road. Is there a possibility that, that, Mr. Stathkus said at the last meeting it'd be like 25 Mile Road, so I went down 25 and they got curbs there and most of the ditches are like none there. Will that be the same case on 24 Mile Road?
I don't believe so. This is not a road improvement project, this is a water main project that's getting a new road, but it's getting it back to what it was before, so I'm not anticipating any real design changes that I'm aware of, but if this is a special incident.
Not going to be curbs there or anything?
No, there's no, no curbs going in that are not already in place on the road. And as far as the ditches, all of the current flow lines will be, anything that's disturbed will be replaced at that current flow line.
You got places?
I'm sorry, there's no curbs, there's no, no new additional curb being placed. Anything that's disturbed that's currently on the project will be replaced. And then as far as the ditch lines go, uh, there will be no changes. If we disturb any ditch line, it will get regraded and stabilized to the current flow line. So essentially, everything will look the exact same with the exception of having a new paved road when we're complete.
All right, thank you.
Sorry to come back up, but there's just a little clarification that I needed for 24 Mile. As you know, it's going east and westbound. And it sounded like you said you were not going to pave the eastbound side.
The, both east and westbound will be full, full with pavement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Matthew Carlson, a longtime resident of Shelby Township. First, I'd like to say, Mr. Mancini, thank you very much and to the township people for hiring Owen Tree Service. I, I know I brought it up at the last meeting. You couldn't do any better than Kay Schneider as far as practical experience and knowing the ins and outs of urban forestry and all of the things that go along with it. One thing that I would ask that in addition to having her here to monitor what goes on and make whatever changes need to be made in your process as you're doing the job, that you also put together an informational packet for the residents of how to best deal with the changes in the soil hydrology that'll take place after you put that essentially concrete base and underground river, which is what happens when you put those kind of projects in. That's pretty much all I have to say, but I'm looking forward to having Kay around. That's, I, I've got some experience with her in the past and like I said, you could not have done any better. Thank you.
I think that decision was based on Mr. Stathkus, so I think he deserves the.
Well, actually, I want to give credit where credit is due. It was you who told us that we probably need to look at this issue and I'm glad we did, but it was actually Fazal Khan and Associates who came up with the idea. Mr. Khan said, look, no one knows about trees, so we need to get someone. And Shannon, I think it was actually you who recommended Kay and I'm glad you did too. But thanks to you, Steve, for coming up with the issue and for Fazal Khan getting right on top of it. Okay, next question.
My name is Clarence Delator, I live on Seven Oaks between Dequinder and Shelby Road. I've been there 23 years. I'm going to address this to Ms. Schrader, Schneider, I'm sorry.
It's actually Sycanader, but that's fine, Schneider can do.
Anyway, I traveled that road, especially going westbound and coming back east to Seven Oaks Drive. And maybe 12 or 13 months ago, an oak tree fell about 100 yards in front of me in a windstorm. In fact, there was some ice too. And I, one, I'm going to upset some people here, I'm sure, but in your work, the big, huge limbs of those oak trees that are hanging over the road and it's kind of one-sided on a road favor, I think they should be really inspected if they're hollow. They, they, I recommend them coming down because I came inches and not too long ago, another one fell. It was just the tree next to it. You know, they're beautiful, big oak trees, but I think when we have the opportunity, we need to think of safety issue too. Thank you.
I appreciate that comment. I am very aware of safety. I was a forester at the City of Ann Arbor for eight years and that was my biggest job, basically. And we are looking at those limbs. When the arborist gets in there to do the trimming, they will for sure be communicating any of those issues. And we'll communicate them to the township who then would have to go to the county over those issues, so I appreciate that for sure.
Hi, I'm Sylvie Besser, I live on Breton, which is on the western side between Shelby and Dequinder. When I first read about this, it sounded like the construction in our area, which was closer to the end, western end, was going to be later on in the project, but what was said this, tonight, it sounds like you have two crews now, so it's going to be sooner rather than later, that we're going to see between Shelby and Dequinder, the timing of that, when that's just going to be down to one lane. Do you have any idea when that timing is going to be?
Yeah, in, in a basic sense, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, fall of, probably as we, our goal is to have all of the pipe installed by fall, winter 2015 and followed by paving. Now, some paving will, will spew over into 2016, but our goal is to have all of the pipelines. So as, if you're close to the Rochester Pump Station, you're going to see that late fall, early winter 2015. Goal is to have all of the pipe installed and a majority, if not all of the pavement installed 2015. Now, again, there's going to be valve vaults, specialty structures that will come, you know, connections that will come into 2016, but the majority of the work will be done in 2015.
Okay, because yeah, because at first I was, I just thought it was going to be like way down the line that we were going to get touched in.
Shelby to Rochester would start mid-July next year and end around October next year.
Okay, okay, so have a while then.
And you are correct, a lot of that work was supposed to be done in 2016.
Okay, and then that's before tonight, that's what I, I thought, so, okay. Just a second question, I don't know if this is related or not, but I run in Shelby and Riverbends Park a lot and is that the same project? The trucks that are going in and out of Riverbends? Is that something that's totally different?
I'm not aware of any construction activities in Riverbends Park at this time. I know there's some survey work going on for some trail work along the back, but I'm not aware of any major improvements.
Okay, because they have a lot of the golf, the disc golf closed and stuff like that and there's some big trucks going in and out of there, so.
That may be something that's being done or maintained by Parks and Rec at this point, but it's not anything I'm aware of.
Okay, it's not the same thing then, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name's Paul Midlash. My mother lives on 24 Mile on the south side between Shelby and Mound. And a couple of questions, some of them which maybe you won't be able to answer, but right now she has, she has a well water. And with, with this running through, are people going to be required to hook up to it? And if, if, if they aren't, if they do want to hook up to it, will she be hooking up to the old main on, you know, the south side of the road or is she going to be hooking up to the new one or, you know, is that going to have any bearing on what happens?
No, this, this is a transmission main, this is, there is no hookups to this main for personal residents or business. The hookups would be to an independent eight or 12 inch, I'm not sure what size main, but, but this, this is a trunk line transmission main, it does not have independent service hookup, so it would not, she wouldn't hook up to it nor would it impact. It has nothing to do with hooking up to a water service.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Kay, 5157 Eastbrook Court, that is south of 24 Miles and east of Shelby Road. Well, first of all, we've been there 30 years and we celebrate that occasion by re-elect Rick and our team of trustees. Thank you for holding and hosting this meeting. And I think there's going to be a celebration because there's a whole lot of money is going to be invested. And appreciate this panel, our guest, Mohammed. I, I really truly appreciate that both sides of the road is going to be repaved. It's pretty sad right now.
At DWSD, we're also very proud, proud to have embarked on such a vital job for the community.
We thank you for not just paving one side, but both sides. I mean, that is wonderful, let's raise it. And I think, Steve, you can help our weekly paper and let them know, cut a profile, say, this is existing standard on the road and that's where you're going to be have afterwards, but much nicer. Thank you. And outsider, you coming tonight, coming to our township, we thank you very much for coming. Of course, we're paying you, that's a different story. Come to Shelby Township. Steve, I think you spot right on. We are beautiful tree township, beautiful tree township. That's what we're different than many other towns and we're most fortunate. From what I heard tonight, I am very, very glad to hear the water department and our contractor and our specialists are all very well concerned about our beautiful tree township. And I'm very, very surprised that you're one of the person can, can appreciate those beautiful arching canopy, covers 24 Mile. Very, very, very few places ever have that and we're so fortunate. And I'm sure, Kay, you're going to watch out for the health and the beauty.
And safety.
And the beauty. Safety always come first and they can all work together. The dead, the splendor, the dry out, the slightly rotten branches, for God's sake, trim them, take the opportunity. We don't want your people get hurt, we don't want you get in trouble. And take the opportunity to trim those branches that might hurt people, all the people working there. But those beautiful arches, the lower the better. I'm a civil engineer, the general clearance requirement is 14 to 17 feet. So that means the arches can be as low as 14 to 17 feet, not 25, 30 feet. And they are beautiful arches. So I think this is a very, very positive project coming up. And Ryan, you have the honor of managing a project. I, I really want to congratulate, have such an opportunity and helping from a water department. So my comment is, I'm very glad to hear what's been transpired during this meeting. Safety, absolutely, we have to have. Health of the trees, God knows, are passing down from our forefathers and the people watching on a good nature. But I hope when we leave, giving the information out, we do be specific, it's 14 feet, let it be 14 feet, if 17 feet, let it be 17 feet. Now, go 30 feet up the canopy, may, may not be necessary. If all you need is 22 feet, take 22 feet. 30 feet is very high.
Yeah, we're certainly going to keep it limited to what we really need to safely install the box that we talked about earlier, the trench box, the trench plates, it's very large equipment. Will it be 30 feet? Maybe not, but we, one thing I can assure you, we're going to keep it as, as low and as safe and reasonable as we can do it. And we'll work with, with Kay and with the township and the road commissioner to keep it at that, but I, I can't say I, we can, because. But I can't say I, we can, because I know at a 14 or 15-foot bridge, a piece of equipment half the size has trouble getting under it. So that I know is, is, it's too low, but can we keep it less than 30? We'll make every effort. That I can assure you. We're going to take it limb by limb, tree by tree. We're not, there's no just, you know, take down 30 feet. It's, we're taking each tree and each limb, and you'll notice ribbons around each limb. So this is a very strategic approach. It's not, you know, shotgun approach, I guess, just to say. So we're looking at every tree, every limb. Can it be saved or can't it be saved? And that's our goal.
Thank you very much. Again.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the township. We are different because our beautiful tree township.
And our family's been in this township since the 70s, so we, we appreciate, we respect, we love this township. So we're, there's a commitment from not only my company, but also our family. So we're, we're in this together.
And Ryan, you have the fortune of, a good fortune of, you're not under tight schedule. You're ahead. So when everyone take a little more time, things will come out better. So we're looking forward to this nice repaved road, coming out of water work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
This is City of Trees, and I'm talking about trees also. Bob Ledgie, 51543 Franklin, which is just one house off of 24 Mile between Mound and Shelby. An area of some beautiful trees. We moved here from out of state 28 years ago because of the trees, but unfortunately, those trees are now 28 years older. And we're having some limbs come down across the road. So I'm here to second what the gentleman in the back mentioned a few speakers ago. I would encourage you to be aggressive in forming that new higher arch. The town I moved from had a 30, 40, 50-foot arch, and it was gorgeous and safe. We're really worried that somebody's going to really get hurt, either your people or a motorist. And it has happened already, just south of our house, where a limb's come down on the road and just missed a motorist. So please be aggressive about it. I know you can preserve the beauty. Thank you.
Yeah, and this project brings that benefit. We, you know, we've, because of this project, we're going to look at that. And any trees that look to be a danger, we'll, we'll definitely have them removed.
And I guess I would add one other thing.
Limbs, I should say.
If I, as a layperson, were going to be aggressive about it, I guess I'd be more aggressive on the south side of the road than on the north side. It appears to me, driving up and down that road these 28 years, that there's more freeze thaw problems on the pavement whenever it's in the shadows of thick trees. Check it out. That's where all the big bad potholes are. It's usually where there's a whole cluster of trees close to the road. So if you need to trim out, do it there and give it some air and some light, and we'll probably have the road last a lot longer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to make a suggestion, if you send somebody out there and take all them ribbons down, because all these people were shell shocked when they saw those ribbons. Don't put any ribbons up there until she checks out the height. Put a bucket truck up there, hang up where you're going to take them, and then people can see what you're going to do.
I think the goal of the-
That looks scary.
The goal of the ribbons was to get everybody engaged. We wanted to hear what the community had to say.
They sure enough did.
And maybe we went a little overboard, but thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Armstrong. I live right on 24 Mile Road between Jewel and Chenner. And I have been working with Mr. Stathikas and Mr. Khan about my issue, and it's requesting the consideration of putting a left turn lane in during, in our stretch of 24 Mile Road. A year ago, about a week ago, my husband and I were permanently disabled and seriously issued in a car accident out there because of the speed and the nature of the traffic that goes through there, trying to turn into our own driveway. We were stopped trying to turn into our driveway, and we were hit at 55 miles an hour, and we were put right into the ditch. And there was nothing left of our car. We are very fortunate that somehow the oncoming traffic that we were waiting for to clear saw what was going to happen to us, even though we didn't. And they were able to stop, or we would actually hit into them as we went through. And I know this is just supposed to be a road replacement, but that stretch of road has had many, many accidents in front of my house where the cars have landed in my front yard over the years. I've lived here for 20 years. And it's very, very dangerous. And a lot of people have complained about that area, and there is a space there to do this at that, at this time, and this is the time to do this. So that's what I'm here for. The trees are important in preserving them, but saving lives is important too.
Well, go ahead, Rick.
Hi.
Yes, Mr. Khan and I were out actually at your house last week, and Mr. Khan will be looking at it more closely. And as he said, he will have some kind of report in the next two to three weeks. He has been in contact with Mr. Hoffner, and we'll see what we can do. But as he said, it will take a few weeks. But thank you for bringing it up tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Art Kirby. I'm a resident of Seven Oaks Sub, and that's right off 24 Mile between Dequinder and Shelby. Like several of my neighbors prior, I'm not as confident, and I'm not, and I'm very skeptical of this trimming project for the canopy. We are originally from Bloomfield Hills, spent 35 years on Cranbrook Road, watched that canopy disappear on Cranbrook. Being from the Birmingham area, the same canopy was involved in Adams over on 15 and Maple. And that's gone. Likewise, we moved here to Seven Oaks specifically off of 24 because of the canopy, which you can appreciate. 24 is totally unique, totally different, and the one remaining major road that is still intact with a canopy. You don't see it on 23, you don't see it on 25, you don't see it on 22, it's gone on 21. 24 is the last remaining canopy. I would simply ask, being very conservative, that you approach this in a highly conservative, yes, I heard some of the other neighbors saying, you've got to be aggressive with, you know, the large limbs over the highway. But I am still skeptical, highly skeptical, that it's going to be done right. This higher canopy, like the other gentleman, civil engineer, said, you can come lower. I've driven construction equipment. I know the height barriers. So please, cut an inch short, a foot short, keep it as low as you can, please, that canopy. That's the last remaining mile road with this canopy for this area. And just because you go with a higher canopy, it's going to disappear. There's going to be more sunlight, and it's going to go by the wayside in another 30 years. And I would simply ask your sensitivity in being very, very conservative about your trim approach. So thank you for listening.
Well, my objective is, just, I'm being told by those that are doing the construction, how much clearance they require based on the equipment that they're using and what they're trying to do. So that, you can speak to that. Now, but wait a minute. So I will also, when we do, I want you to understand, when we're cutting some of those big, big limbs on those oak trees, if there isn't appropriate branch to cut back to, you're going to injure the tree more than is if you take it all the way to the trunk. That is, that is just the way, a lot of those old trees are structured. So a lot of them are kind of thinner in the middle because over, over many, many, many years, they shade each other out, and then they, they have that canopy on the ends, basically. So when we come to some of these large branches, you might think, well, my God, why couldn't they cut it halfway? If we don't cut it halfway or cut it back to another limits because we couldn't find one either that was viable or that was going to be big enough to sustain that limb. And what happens then is they start to decay, and it introduces decay into the trunk, and it's better just to take it off. So that I thought I would share with you, so that if you're wondering, what in the heck? But I will use every precaution I can possibly do to get the proper cut, so that the tree will respond the best way it can. And if the, if it's 25 feet, 22 and a half feet, 30 feet, whatever it may be for them to get that equipment through, then, then that's what it'll have to be, because other, if we don't cut it, it's going to break. The other option we may have is, if they're unsure, well, let's, let's get the equipment in there and start working, and then maybe we can trim it lower. And if it needs, if it gets getting an elbow and it's going to break, then we, then we cut it higher. That's, that's the approach I would take on that.
And I can add to that. I mean, I've been doing this full-time since 1985. I personally was the guy standing on the equipment, cutting tree limbs, cutting canopy. And, and our goal was to work cooperatively with the township, work with Kay and her company, and, and be proactive. We didn't just send people out there with chainsaws and start cutting. We really want to partner with the township and do the best we can to preserve that canopy. That's really the whole purpose for this meeting. And really wasn't an obligation under the contract. It's something that we just wanted to work with the township. So it's our commitment to do the best we can to give you the best canopy, protect those trees, and keep it as low as possible. Yet, we don't want to hit them with the excavator when I'll break these limbs. Certainly don't want a limb to fall on top of a worker. So our goal is to keep the canopy as low as possible, but also keep it reasonable and safe.
Well, as many of you, as you know, of you know, I'm Paula Feiler, and I live on 24 Mile Road. And my entry into politics was actually over the preservation of the trees, specifically on 24, when the road commission back prior to 1996 was going to cut all the trees in the right of way. So we were out there, Kay, I was out with you, looking at the trees, and that canopy, to preserve that canopy is just so very important. So I am sure all of you, I trust that you will do what's best for that preservation. Couple of questions. When will the tree trimming begin? And where will you begin?
Well, right now, we don't have a date set for start, because we've been trying to give, you know, Rick and his associates and everybody time to process everything. Kay, time to do her investigation, but hopefully right after the holiday, somewhere in January, we'll probably commence with it. We'll probably start Van Dyke and move west. And then there's a little bit of stuff from Van Dyke up to Jewel that has to be done also.
Okay. If a tree does need to come down, what will you, what will be your process for notifying the homeowner? Well, I will notify the township. And then what will be our, the township's process for making sure the homeowner is notified?
Some of the discussions that we've had is that we would get together on, with Kay, and identify those homes that have some of the larger trees or the more critical trees, and work with her to get either a door hanger out or knock on the doors and notify the residents in person to let them know which trees were going to be impacted. And Mr. Stathikas had indicated that he wanted to take the charge on making sure all of the residents were, were visited.
Okay. We don't want, we want to make sure a tree doesn't come down, and they come home and the tree's down, so we want to make sure the notification.
Correct.
Another question. We talked about this a little bit, Steve, last week. What will happen with all the wood? Wood chips, what are, wood chips from the tree trimming?
Yeah, we did talk to our, I think our, our preferred contractor, okay? And I think the goal is to either provide the wood chips to the residents or to the township or a combination of both. So that's the goal. I don't think we have a problem. There's no reason that if, if somebody needs, certainly preference will be to those people that are impacted, you know, trees in front of their, their residents. So the goal is to kind of get a list of people that have a, have a request for the, the wood chips and, and the township. If they want them, we'll, we'll, you know, stockpile them in their DPW yard or wherever.
So if the, if there, a resident, which I agree, I think the residents that are impacted would, would be the first.
Kind of, yeah, the first.
Right. How would, how would they go about making that request to you?
They could make it directly to us, or they can make it to the township and just, you know, make sure we get, we get notice that, hey, we're looking for whatever it is. If it's a small quantity, we can either dump it at, you know, off at their residence, or they can pick it up at the township if the township's going to have. But this is something I learned today, that we are able to provide those wood chips to both the township and the residents. So we, we're going to need to assemble a list.
Yeah, and I will caution you, a small amount might be like 10 or to 16 yards, because it's very hard to get them dumped out of a truck and then not dump them all.
Right, sure.
So if you, you might, if you have a small need, then get it from the township.
A lot of properties on 24 are large, so that might not be a problem.
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work, we'll work with you best we can. You know, we have loaders if that needs, need be.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, I live directly on 24 Mile Road, and thank you for, for the tree situation. We appreciate the canopy as well as the neighbors. My question has to do more with the construction phase. Recently, we've noticed blue and yellow flags all down 24 Mile Road between Van Dyke and Mound. And some of those flags are north of the sidewalk, shall I say, closer to the house. Can you address the distance from the actual road to where you're going to be digging? We will lose our sidewalks. We will lose our ditches.
No, those, those flags are what's called locate flags.
Okay.
So basically, when we're going to be digging in the ground, we call, what's called mist dig, which is, you know, Michigan locates. They come out, yellow is generally gas, blue is existing water lines, water services. So those flags really don't have anything to do with what we're going to be putting in the ground or disturbing. They're just marking the location so that we don't damage them while we're constructing.
Okay. Do we anticipate losing the sidewalk?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. And we also know that the ditches will be restored to their existing condition as far as-
Any damaged sidewalk, grass will be put, replaced new. So everything will be new.
Okay, and we did talk previously in the very first meeting that you were out here, Mr. Mancini, about replacing driveways and mailboxes and things that are going to be impacted by the complete construction. Correct?
Yeah, everything will be new, or like a mailbox will be maybe temporarily relocated and then put back.
Okay.
If it's damaged, it'll be replaced in new.
Will we have notice of the mailbox removal, or will we have some kind of idea of when that will happen? So perhaps if we wish to remove our own mailbox, we can do so?
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll let you know. I'll, I'll get with some of our field staff and we'll make an effort.
Door hangers, something?
Yeah, flyer or personal communication. We'll, we'll notify the people, the residents that-
Because we are on the north side of the road, which is where all your construction will be between Van Dyke and Mound. So what is the anticipated schedule for that area?
Well, we're, we're in that area now.
Yes, you're working on the project at Rouen.
Yep, we should be, the goal is early January to be the west side, well, basically at Rouen area and moving to the west.
Okay, so you'll be starting immediately?
Yeah, well, we're actually, we're working there now, but we're working essentially from Rouen up towards Van Dyke, getting some, some of the pipe and some of the structures installed. And then we're going to come back the other side and, and head west.
Okay, so will that end of 24 Mile Road east toward Van Dyke be open at some point?
Yes, before, before we progress from Rouen, you will have an eastbound through lane.
Because currently that is closed, is that correct?
It is correct from our bore site. It was, with the sandy soils and everything, we lost too much road to provide a safe travel lane. So as soon as we get far enough away, we will restore that and open that eastbound lane again.
Okay, so first of the year, we should anticipate seeing more of you folks down 24 Mile Road between Van Dyke and Mound?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two questions regarding the trees. When DTE comes in and trims the trees in my backyard, they only trim the side that's, where the lines are at. And I'm just hearing this discussion tonight. Now, when the trees are trimmed up 30 feet, is this going to be on both sides of the, the tree, or you're going to trim only on the side where the equipment is going to be?
We're only going to take off what has to come off. So it'll only be on one side, and only that portion that has to come off.
So these trees will look strange like my do in my backyard?
They'll be arched over the road, a little higher than over the walk, yes.
On one side, they'll have lower branches. On the, on the resident's side, they'll have lower branches, and no branches on the other side.
Well, they'll have branches on the other side, they'll be taller, right? Yeah. Tree won't mind.
They do, mine, mine are still living, but, but they look strange.
Well, they're not symmetrical, it's true.
The other question I have is regarding oak wilt.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if, does all this construction work, does that stir up the oak wilt and cause, because most of those trees are- cause, because most of those trees are oak trees?
Yes.
And is that going to cause that wilt to progress more rapidly than it is now?
What causes the wilt to progress is any wounding to the tree during the warm season. So it'll be very important that any trimming that we do on those trees is done in the cold season when they're not growing. So that's one reason we're going to trim this winter, I would, I'm sure, besides just because they have to have their work done. But also on those oak trees, that work's got to be done when it's not in season. If there is a knock, somebody, you know, bumps into the tree by accident, knocks some bark off or something, you can use a latex paint to seal that wound and not attract the, the carriers of the disease. And that's something that we would definitely recommend that, should that happen.
Are you going to be monitoring the wilt as well?
Yep, yes.
Well, now, when you say you're going to be doing this during the winter months, is that clear across 24 Mile Road or only in the area in Shelby?
I, my only concern on my end of it is that we trim the oaks in the off season, whenever that is. And if, if we absolutely can't trim them for some reason in the off season, we can, and we have to trim them when the oak wilt is getting passed between trees, then we're going to have to do painting and some extra stuff to them. But it'd much, much, much better that we trim them off season. So that may answer your question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, Dave Quarter, 24 and Mound area. I live on Dryden. I have a question. If they do take trees down completely, okay, will they also grind the stump?
I don't know.
Because you're going to take the tree, might as well take it down to where at least it's aesthetically correct.
That would not be my call, but yeah.
Yeah, we certainly would, yeah. We would, it would be restored ground and landscape.
Okay. Will the sidewalks have, will people have access to the sidewalks on 24 Mile? I know there's some places that the sidewalk is very close to the actual roadbed and I'm just curious if people would have access.
I mean, it's certainly a case by case basis, but right now, I do not anticipate taking any sidewalks out of service.
Okay.
But, you know, if there is, it'll be for a limited and short period of time.
Okay. If you, okay, I'm going to judge that you're probably not doing just in time for your pipe delivery. There's going to be pipe delivery, it's going to be up and down 24 Mile. And you've already said that any damage done at the sidewalk, you would take care of that. So that takes.
That's correct, definitely. It's, and it's all under the inspection of the road commission, so it'll all be part of their.
Okay. And one other question or concern that I do have is because certain parts of the sidewalk are actually lower than 24. And I live in an area where there's a very high water table, okay? That I am looking at, probably you're saying you're going to be going out 30 to 40 feet that maybe taking out that sidewalk.
Well, one, I think we've talked about earlier is, you know, our, our goal, you know, is not to have a 30 to 40 foot wide excavation, you know? It's, it's going to be as narrow as possible in all instances. Some of the areas where we have very deep work, it kind of naturally lends itself to having a little bit wider excavation.
I can tell you for instance, I've replaced a mailbox post that rotted out. I looked down and there was water at the bottom of the mailbox post. That's how high the water table was at that particular time. So, and I live right off of 24, so. Another concern I have, the side roads, I know your employees are going to be parking there, okay? One concern I have is that they park on one side of the road so that emergency vehicles can get through if need be, okay? I don't care if it's the east side, west side of the road, you know, just, just have it be one side, okay? And then the only other question I have is from Mr. Schubert. Why didn't you go down 26 Mile where there were no trees whatsoever? You had all this green space. It just made sense. And you've got a little bit of gravity because it's a higher, if you put the pumping station where, you know, the water comes in and crosses there, you're actually a little bit higher than you are at the pumping station on 24 Mile. You'd use a lot of gravity in that case and, like I said, you wouldn't have torn up, you wouldn't even be having this meeting, so.
No, the idea is to connect to the existing parallel line in order to meet the increased demand for the community here.
Your line come down, basically what's the bike trail, main line?
Yes, yeah.
And so at basically Shelby Road and 26, that area, you know, the, the 26 Mile where it crosses there, it would have made sense, there are no trees there, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
He actually shook it. He actually made me think of something else. About three, four years ago, up at Bank of America in that parking lot, when they were doing some line work under the ground, they pumped the groundwater out. Are you going to be doing that? Because it's like at my house, I use well water to water the grass. Everyone else around me, just about, they don't have enough groundwater, there's no vein coming underneath their property, so they cannot, they have to use city water to water their lawns and gardens and, you know, whatnot. Will you be pumping groundwater out?
I'm not, you know, I don't know specifically where your residence is and whether or not we'll need to do dewatering, but.
Between 20, off of 24, the south side between Mound and Shelby, Eastbrook Court.
How far off of 24?
Well, when they pumped out by Bank of America, you know, and Chase, whatever, okay, you go down Arthur to Eastbrook, the west end, and I lost all my groundwater. I have a well driller come in and put more points in for me on two, two different wells.
I mean, certainly we can take a look. It sounds like you're far enough away where I doubt it. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Look, it's one lot in.
Yeah.
It's one house in, I'm not right on 24, but it's directly behind.
When we do do dewatering, it's really localized to our operation. So, I mean, the types of dewatering that we use, the sphere of influence is generally a 50, you know, well, let's say 100 foot diameter or less from, from the units that we use.
Right.
And, and we're really only using it where it's absolutely necessary, where we just can't accomplish our work without doing dewatering.
Okay, because when, if you end up having to do it around, you know, you can see 7-Eleven, the two banks, right in that area, I'm going to end up losing my groundwater again and it's going to cost me money to put in points.
Well, if you have any indication of groundwater loss, please call us, we'll provide temporary water service to you. I, I'm not convinced that's going to be the case, but certainly call us. If you want to be proactive, we can certainly take a look and see if it's even possible just to be kind of give you a heads up.
Because it's going to end up being, I know you say you're going to work over the winter and all this, weather preventing, not like last year.
It really depends on the depth of the pipeline at that location. If it's a, if, some of these, like, we've got dewatering 30 feet deep right now and it's not impacting you, but if the pipeline is 10 feet deep, I, I, one, I doubt we're going to do any dewatering and two, if we do dewatering, I doubt it would impact your, your.
Can I get one of your business cards? Now, in the area where I'm, you know, talking 24 Mile, when do you suppose that you'll be to the, I know you say you're going to work that over the winter.
What's, what's the nearest major intersection?
More on Shelby.
Shelby.
Mm-hmm.
Ah, you would probably be midsummer of 15.
That'll hit me, just run the watering, no more grass.
Yeah, we can take a look at that and see if there's even a proposed dewatering plan for that area.
Can I get one of your cards?
We can do that.
Definitely.
I appreciate it.
What's your address, if you don't?
502.
Yeah, I didn't bring them, but he can put it up there and just put my name on there, it's the same.
East, Eastbrook Court.
And then Street. They call them dead end, now they call them called. Then hence the rest of the neighbors. Could you, Rick, could you make sure that Brad posts it, posts their numbers on our website?
I'll look at the area and I'll get, I'll give you a call and let you know if I think.
I do have a question that a resident had just asked me to ask you. It involved the sidewalks and the school, Schweitzer School at 24 and, and Shelby Road. The concern is how will the construction affect children who walk to school on the north side of 24? So they'd be coming, going, going west to Shelby Road?
24 and Shelby, you said?
So anyone coming from, well, there is a stretch there where, you know, there are children that go to Schweitzer that use that sidewalk. It would be the sidewalk between Mound and Shelby Road.
I mean, from what I'm seeing, I, I don't think that we're going to have really any negative impact. And that sidewalk is all backside of the ditch, correct, through that area?
Yes, yes, it is.
I, I really doubt, the very worst thing that I think would happen would be if we got into that ditch, we would just have to place some snow fence along the edge of the sidewalk or something of that nature to make sure that it was still safe.
So would you notify the school to let them know about construction? Is that something you could do?
We certainly will notify them. And if there's an instance where children are exposed to equipment, if there's no barrier or if it's the sidewalks real close, we'll, we'll maybe look at that and put it, especially near the school, put some temporary, I call it temporary security, orange security fence.
Right.
You use the word snow fence, that's, that's an old terminology. It's more of a safety, orange safety fence.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Mike Colak, 5535, 24 Mile Road. I see a lot of trees. 23, 24 years ago, I bought the property because of the trees. Now I see some bad trees, bad limbs, some not. I have one tree really nice, the other one really bad, wind broken. But the nice one, skinny branches. And I'm retiring from general morgues. I, I ran a rig, I pick up 30 ton between the presses. I don't see why you guys cannot go between the branches and pick up those. How, how heavy is that one pipe? How much weight?
They're 15,000 pounds each.
15,000?
20 foot long.
It's not just picking up to it, it is, it is a control, you know, between handling the box, handling the plates, the trench box, you know, the, the loading the trucks. It's, it's just very complicated. And again, I can assure you, our workers, I mean, our crews have been with our company over 20 years. These guys are, they're highly skilled, like I'm sure you, running a press. And they're going to do everything they can to, to minimize the impact, but there still has to be some pruning and clearing of these trees that literally you can't get the bucket with the pipe low enough to go under the tree limb. So, so, or get the bucket when it's carrying the trench plates, the safety plates or the trench box, the security box, you know, my OSHA and the safety regulatory, there's rules we have to follow. And so again, we, we will make every effort to keep the excavation and impact as low as possible, but, but I can assure you, if we prune a tree, it's because we have to.
Yeah, I know the rules, but also, you know, I used to work tight spot, you cannot be moved. These branches, they can go a little bit up. If a rig comes out, oh, I'm going to hit the branch, but chop it off? I don't, I hope not.
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
You know, the, you can lift it up a little bit and branch is going to go back home. I picked up 30, 35 ton between the presses. I don't see these 15, 2,000 pounds, whatever it is, you know? You guys can work it out between the trees.
And that's the goal. I mean, the goal will be to, in the instances where we can work around a branch, we will work around that branch. There's, that is the goal, that's why we're here, that's why we're meeting with Kay and her firm and, and that's why I'm involved, to, to, to make every effort to do exactly what you're talking about.
We appreciate it very much, but, you know, keep that in concern because, you know, it's not just chop it off, you know? And now the branch is going to grow. I'm going to be gone before the branch is going to go.
We agree with that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Lynn Free, 7501, 24 Mile. Hi, Brian. Oh, boy. Being that my house is directly in front of everything happening right now, my water was compromised last week and I just wanted to see if that was going to happen again. I don't know how far along you are on the project in front of my house.
No, that, that only occurred because when they did the locates, they didn't locate your water service. So there was no indication to our guys when they went to dig a retrieval pit that there was any water service or any, any existing utility in that area. But when they did hit it, they, you know, immediately went and got parts and fixed it. I don't even think, it was fixed before you even returned home, correct?
Right, I didn't notice it. I got home late that night and turned the water on and it spit and sputtered.
A fault of mistake, they, they just didn't find the service.
Hats off to your crew, many compliments to them. They've done everything they can to keep me moving in and out of my driveway when I need to. They were kind enough to come up to me the next morning and, you know, ring the bell and let me know that they had compromised the water, which I'm sure they knew I had already known at that time. One of my concerns is when are you going to be done with the stretch between my house and Van Dyke? Because, the only reason I ask is I have no mail service and I've had one trash pickup in six weeks.
Okay, so you're.
So I just am trying to get a timeframe.
Trash pickup, if, if we have to, we'll handle that. I mean, we should make sure.
I've called every week, every single week. Last week, I called on the way to work and they actually did pick it up, but.
Our firm or, or the trash?
No, you're talking the trash. I, I didn't, I didn't know you were still having any issues with that. We'll, we'll figure it out. I mean, whether it's us moving your, you know, your trash receptacles down to the end of that closed area so that they will pick it up on the garbage day. And as far as the mail, I can figure out something for that also, temporary mailbox, something of that nature.
Well, the other thing that I could suggest is if the post office, you know, gave me a little repass, I mean, it's Christmas time. I went into the post office Saturday to get my mail and it's backed out the door, which I was lucky that the girl had opened the half door and said anyone for pickup. But if I had a special pass that let me not have to stand in that line, would be fine. I mean, I'm willing to work with anybody, how I would have to, to be the least complaint of.
Why they're not bringing the mail? They won't back up. She's a very unique situation in that she's in our closure right now for the bore pit.
I see.
So I, I've already had some discussions for other reasons with the post office. So if you could, I mean, you have my number, but I can give you my card again. Call me in the morning and I will, I'll talk to them again on your behalf, well, I'll talk to them on your behalf for the first time. And I'm fairly confident we can get that rectified and figure out a way to get you mail service to your residents.
Okay.
More than likely, it's going to be, I'll have to put up a temporary mailbox, probably down by Rouen area.
Okay, the only concern I have with that is the vandalism that happens around that area, that if my mailbox isn't in front of my house and it's off the side of the road and you have numerous cars and the kids coming in and out, that I may come and think I don't have mail to where it's been compromised. So I'm a little concerned about changing it to a, an area off the beaten path.
Well, why don't you, why don't you talk to the mail service and you two communicate and come up with a plan that you're comfortable with?
Okay.
We'll, we'll come up with something that you're comfortable with.
Once you're done with, in front of my house, going from my house to Van Dyke, the road will be put back to gravel?
Yep.
And then the eastbound traffic will start again?
Correct.
So that you're trying to do by January?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe two more months?
Oh, no, no, it'll be, we'll have that eastbound open latest mid-January.
Okay, so another month.
Really, we're pushing the guys very hard right now to try and do it. It'll be done by mid-January. I, I'm trying to do it sooner, but it's, some of that work right there just takes time because of the depth and the size of the structures. But as soon as it's possible at all, we will restore that eastbound lane there.
Okay. The only other thing I noticed is I know you guys are there pretty early in the morning and I don't think you're there like quarter to 12 at night, but I have seen flashlights out in the pit by the equipment and that. I did not look out to see if it I did not look out to see if it was a rickman truck in the area, but I don't know if you have any police, extra police checks, because I haven't seen a police car since this whole project started anywhere.
Well, we, I mean, we do have police that checks on, you know, our equipment and everything else, but I highly doubt at that time of night, so that's...
Right.
That's a little bit...
Okay, well, I just wanted to give you my concern that someone's out there in your equipment at that time of night, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You very much. Yeah.
Yeah, if that's one of your workers, that would be a lot of overtime. I do want to ask Mr. Jabar, I have a question for you. What is the possibility of water disruption, and if there should be or will be, how will that be handled?
We're doing some hydraulic modeling right now to minimize any disruption. We have not come up with the plan yet, but we were pretty confident that we will do our best to minimize any service disruption. Once this plan is ready, we're going to be discussing that with Mr. Miller back there. And it's going to be something you can live with and for Mr. Miller to approve for your own satisfaction. So we're working on it, we're very concerned about it also.
Any other question I have is a 36-inch pipe, will there be any use for that at all once the new 42-inch water pipe is put in?
Of course. There will be some cross-connection into that 36-inch, so it'll still be live line. We're just increasing the capacity of the water. So we will have two lines in the 24-inch, in the 24 Mile Road actually operational.
Okay. Any other questions? Come on up. Yeah, you really do, because no one from home can hear you. Thank you. That's a fun part of these meetings, I know. Thank you for coming, we do appreciate it.
Is the pipe going to stop at the pumping station? So there won't be any pipe from the pumping station to Dequender?
You mean the new pipe?
Right.
Yeah. The pipe will, I think, the end of it is Whitby or Whitby?
Whitby.
Whitby. That's where the project ends. That will, and that, that will be eventually connected to the Rochester Station in a different job, in a future job.
In a future job? When would that be?
That is coming up based on our, I guess, hydraulic plan that we have in place right now.
Okay, but the road will be paved completely to Dequender? Or is it stopping at Whitby?
Up to Whitby.
Mr. Hackel, I did talk to Mr. Hackel, and he assured me that he would go all the way to Dequender, so thank you to the county, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just want to say, oh, go ahead, Ms. Tyler.
Just real quick, there was a question earlier this evening about construction work going on in Riverbend's Park. The township is not doing any work in Riverbend's Park, and it is not part of the 24 Mile Road project, but, or Macomb County is doing some work on the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor that runs along through that park and along the riverway. So the construction work going on there is regular maintenance work on an existing sanitary sewer line.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. Well, I just want to say on behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, thank you panel for being here. We are going to do another meeting, I think we talked about maybe the first quarter of 2015, a specific date to be announced. But Mohammed, I want to thank you to, for representing the Detroit Water Project. You people have been fantastic to work with, and keep up the good work. And Ryan and Steve, thank you very much. I haven't received any calls, or maybe one or two, but you've taken care of business, and we really like that a lot. Kay will be working with you a lot, thank you. And Shannon, thanks for everything you do every day for Shelby Township. You and Fausel, Conant Associates do a wonderful job. So again, on behalf of the entire board, thank you all, and we'll see you back here sometime first quarter. And again, if you have any questions, Steve Mancini is the guy. Thank you very much, and good night, everybody. Thank you.